Good morning and welcome to the Pinellas County Board of County Commissioners, the Budget Information Session this morning. And, Mr. Administrator, I'll turn it over to you.
This morning, Bill is going to review the budget and the overview of the property millage rates for certification to the county appraiser and turn it over to Bill.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
Bill Berger with Office of Management and Budget. And, as Barry said, the objective of today's Budget Information Session is to establish the maximum millage rates that we're going to certify with the property appraiser by tomorrow. And those millage rates will be included in the truth and millage notices that are mailed to all property owners. Those will go out by the property appraiser somewhere around the third week of August, somewhere around August 20th. And, once we certify those millage rates, we can decrease them if we choose to, but we cannot increase them. So, in terms of considerations for what millage rates we do certify, we would want to talk about a couple of potential changes to the proposed budget you received last week, and then also any additional feedback that you all may have based on reviewing the documents. So, as far as potential changes to the proposed budget, we do have a couple of items that we weren't aware of at the time that we put together the proposed budget. The first one being from the medical examiner. And, there's about $100,000 that's being requested by the medical examiner. It's something supported by the sheriff, the police chiefs, and the state attorney. And, it's been approached that's been vetted across the state. And, it's related to what I would characterize as an unfunded mandate related to THC testing as a result of a new Florida state statute that was passed and implemented on July 1st that allows for hemp to be legalized. So, as a result of hemp being legalized, there's a testing that we would like to be able to do in order to make sure that the levels of THC in the hemp are below a certain threshold. So, in order to be able to do that, the medical examiner has expressed that based on the volume, they would need one FTE within their shop. That's part of the medical examiner staff, not a county employee. And then also a small amount of non-recurring equipment that goes with that. So, in total, it's about $99,000 that they're asking for. For this year, it'd be about $75,000 on a recurring basis. And, it's something that we have general fund reserves available to be able to help support. So, in terms of millage impact, there's no millage impact that we would speak to related to this. So, the proposed millage we talked about during the proposed budget for the general fund would remain unchanged based on our recommendations. The second piece is, or second item is the Cross Bay Ferry. And, we'll talk about this during the agenda review, but on Tuesday, your works at, or your board meeting, Mayor Kreisner will be coming forward with a request for funding for years two and three, next year and the year after, for the Cross Bay Ferry. They're asking for $149,000 in the first year, or at least year two next year, and then a slightly lower amount in the following year. That's based on a combination of a contract that they've negotiated with HMS Ferry as the operator, as well as a grant that they have coming in from the state. And, as with the past years that we've done this, I want to note a couple of things. One is that the same partners would be participating at the same funding levels as we are. Those are being St. Pete, Tampa, and Hillsborough County. There's also a provision in the contract that allows for revenue sharing if a certain revenue threshold is met. The expectation the city has set is that we would not meet that revenue threshold, so we should not expect the dollars would be coming back. The third thing that I want to make sure that you're aware of in terms of funding is that, in the past, we funded that out of the Transportation Trust Fund. While there's a survey that's come out that's given us some more insight into the ridership, we still think that's probably the appropriate funding source. And, again, we would intend to use reserves from the Transportation Trust Fund to be able to support this request if you direct us to include that in the proposed budget. No actions necessary from you on today. Like I said, the mayor will be coming on Tuesday, and you'll have an opportunity to be able to address him with any questions that you have, and then be able to provide some guidance to us.
But, just like the item above, it's, it would be included, would not require a millage change, which is the purpose of today's discussion.
Correct. Next, the Health Department and the Adult Medicaid Dental Program. Dr. Cho has recently made us aware of the fact that there is a gap in funding related to dental Medicaid. And, this is really something that is across the board, whether it be adults or children, in terms of funding levels. And, the scenario that's come up is that the newly negotiated contracts for services for the providers of the Medicaid Dental, those private providers are providing at a rate, and the Medicaid rate that we're receiving is lower than it used to be. So, there's been a decrease in how much we get in reimbursement. As a result of that, there's a gap in funding. What we're looking at, and what the Health Department has communicated, is that their plan initially, out of the gate, was to address that by eliminating the adult Medicaid program. That's something that does not eliminate all dental for adults. There's still a significant amount of funding and support that we have for that. However, it would reduce the number of unduplicated patients that would actually be served as adults within the Medicaid area. We are still looking at that with the Health Department. There's still ongoing discussions, so there's no decision point at this stage. And, if we do decide that we want to be able to restore or maintain that program, which is the only program in the state, by the way, and we are the only county that actually funds this particular provision, if we do decide we want to preserve that moving forward, there are sufficient reserves within the Health Department fund so that there is no millage change necessary. So, again, in terms of your decision today, the fact that we haven't made a decision, haven't come to a solid conclusion together on what to do moving forward, does not impact what millage rate that you would have.
Madam Chair, if I could, I don't know if I want to make a comment or ask a question. I am struck by the fact that we are the only county in the state that's doing this, correct? And, I would, I'm curious about whether or not you know what the amount of money is that we're talking about.
The Health Department has expressed it's about $226,000. It's a funding gap directly related to this program. So, preserving this program would require that amount additional to be appropriated from reserves in the Health Department fund. And, those reserves are available.
And, how long have we been picking up that slack? This isn't the first year that we've done that, correct?
This program's been in place for a number of years. So, the change that's being communicated as a potential way to address this by the Health Department is to eliminate that provision of the program, or that portion of the program, which will make us consistent with the rest of the state.
We were just made aware of this. So, you know, as part of our, of the ongoing budget discussions and my meetings with Dr. Cho, this was not raised as an issue. So, this, this is a new thing. The, the piece here is as we study this, if we decide to go forward with that program, there's sufficient reserves within the Health Fund to be able to cover it. But, it does require more discussion.
Well, and I, and I hear that, but my concern is, because we've been picking up that slack for a couple of years already, we have set an expectation, correct, with our citizens, that they can get this service at the Health Department?
I can't speak to that directly.
Speak to it.
Please.
Okay. I met with Dr. Cho about many issues a week ago, and was, had heard from the dental community that there was going to be either a cut, a severe cutback, or an elimination of adult dental services for about 4,000 adults, which would have a spiraling effect across our not-for-profit providers who, the free clinics, et cetera. And, so, I, this is something new. What happened is the state started contracting with private Medicaid providers, and they cut back on the reimbursement rate severely. And, so, because of that, they were going to have to either severely cut back or eliminate adult care, dental care. And, so, I asked, you know, well, what is it going to take so that you don't have 4,000 adults suddenly going throughout the system trying to find care? And, this was the amount of money. Again, it's very late-breaking news, and so, I know that we'll be meeting further with Dr. Cho, but because today we were going to talk about the budget, I asked that it be put on the agenda at least.
Well, and I appreciate that, Commissioner Seal. Again, though, this is another example of us picking up the slack for what has historically been covered in other governmental entities, not only at the state level, but, you know, it's a, it's a mushroom effect because the feds have a piece of this as well. And, my biggest concern, as I listen to this, is it wasn't very long ago, because it's since I've been here, that we added a little bit of a percentage in the millage rate for the Health Department, correct, to take care of the little kids for dental sealant, et cetera?
School nurses.
That was for school nurses.
But, we did a dental sealant thing as well, did we not?
We partially have done dental sealants. That was several years ago for children in Title I schools, as well as the juvenile welfare budget covers. So, we do about half and half.
But, we all know, those of us who care about the health of our community, that when you don't have a healthy mouth?
Yes.
You don't have a healthy body. And, it mushroom effects into other significant health issues.
It does.
And, I, I think we can all regret that we're getting this information at this late date. That said, it occurs to me that we, this is something we may have missed when we've been having our strategic planning session, that we haven't done a deeper dive into this particular area, because I don't see this as anything that's going to get fixed anytime soon, number one. But, number two, it also puts a real crimp in our ability to move forward and do a major, major any, anything with our mental health issues that we're working so hard to address. I mean, just pick an issue. I mean, there's just only so much dollars. And, I think we have to have a conversation here about what is our philosophy going forward? This isn't going to get wiped out overnight. And, the way things are going, it just gets more and more and more severe. I mean, I-
Actually, you know, this is almost really a Band-Aid.
Of course it is. But, that's what we're always doing, is-
I know.
-making up Band-Aids to cover real issues.
For what the state doesn't fund.
What?
For what the state doesn't fund.
Well, I'm, yeah, I hate to be so, I really am trying not to be snarky, Commissioner Welch. I see you over there giving me the eyebrow.
What is the side conversation directed at Dr. Cho?
Commissioner Gerard?
I just had a question. I mean, I agree that we need to have that conversation in terms of human services in general, and what are we, what's our responsibility? But, my question was, are these people that are eligible for Medicaid?
Yeah, so, Lordess, Assistant-
They're on Medicaid?
Assistant County Administrator, we do not currently fund this. These are for individuals who are on the dental Medicaid. And, because the reimbursements have gone down because of managed care-
The dentists have gone down.
-Dr. Cho and his team are getting less funding, and so, he's in the red. So, these folks can also go to the community health centers who take this funding, the Medicaid funding. There aren't a lot of providers in the community, and they do get wraparound funding from the feds that Dr. Cho doesn't get to help support that, just for more information.
Well, and just for, I just wanted to comment on that. It's extremely difficult to find an independent dentist that takes Medicaid.
That's correct.
It's almost impossible.
Correct. So, I know that-
It's between us and the community health center.
So, my question is, can the, does the community health center have the ability to pick up the slack here and not so much at the Health Department? And, maybe we can just refer people there?
Yeah, their wait times are going to be longer. That's something that we need to do a deeper dive with them on. Dr. Cho and I talked about that. They do have beautiful facilities. I know a lot of you have toured and have talked to us about partnering with them more. And, we do already give them some money through our lip funding that we had. So, they've increased their dental because of that, for 2019, anyway.
So, maybe that's the solution, and not so much in this area. I'm just saying.
It, but again, it has a rippling effect. So, if they can't get care at the dental, the Department of Health, they are going to be going to other providers, and consequently, their costs are going to go up because of it. So, you got to make up the gap somewhere, so.
So, if you're interested, I have a slide on how much we've provided in dental since, you can see there, since 2014, who we've partnered with and who we've increased. And, again, like you all said earlier, or Commissioner Long said, these are monster issues, right? Mental health, dental, these are all needs. This ranked number 10 in the list of priorities when the community health assessment was just done.
I don't see mental health on there.
No, this is just for dental.
This is just-
These are just the dental funds that we provide-
I got to have my skis.
...that the county provides.
Question and answer?
Yes.
So, with all that background, the 226,000 potential deficit, the source, Bill, you say it was from the, is it the Health Department reserves?
Correct. Health Department reserves.
Okay.
And, that would be for fiscal year 20.
So, that, that became, the, the real issue was whether or not we needed to adjust our millage, if in fact. And, so, since it can be absorbed within their Health Department reserve, then we can still continue to study this issue and bring you a recommendation later prior to setting the final budget, answering all the questions that have been raised this morning.
Because, of course, we don't approve the budget until two meetings in September. And, this is August 1st. So, there is still time to have discussions about this.
We better hurry up.
I didn't want it to be a surprise later on, so, wanted to make sure we brought it up today.
Just, I, I'm-
Yes.
I want to make sure I was clear. Is the, the community health organization, do they, are they a Medicaid provider for this service? I mean, do they, do they have, so, so if the folks were displaced from the Health Department to them, is, are they still experiencing that shortfall?
That is correct. The, they could go to the community health centers, which I believe we have about 11 throughout the, the county that provides dental services. And, they get more reimbursement. So, they get the Medicaid reimbursement, and they also get a federal reimbursement called wraparound.
Our Health Department is not an FQHC.
So, they don't get that.
Community health centers are.
So, does that cover the gap in coverage that we're talking about? Or-
The Medicaid reimbursements are very low, as opposed to if you go to your dentist. I think that's something you're all aware of. They also get a supplement from the feds. So, it's still low, but it's not as low as the Health Department.
So, when they, they're, they're still going to have to come out of pocket, then? Is that what you're saying, at, at, at the community health?
I'd have to get with them to see if there's any deficit. I've never heard that in our meetings with them.
I haven't either. So, that's why I wanted, there wouldn't be a deficit for the, for the resident. They wouldn't have to come up with-
Oh, the resident wouldn't have to pay. If they, if they bill Medicaid, they can't bill a resident.
Okay, so.
Thank you, Lordess.
And, there's 11, 11 of those sites, I think, is what you said, Lordess. So, throughout the county. Okay, thank you.
I don't know whether they provide dental at every site.
Right.
That's true.
That's a question.
Yeah, we can find out how many of those sites.
I don't think so.
But, yeah, I'm sure you're right on that.
I know in Tarpin that they don't. They're looking to expand into dental up there. So, you're right, perhaps they don't do it all of them.
All right, so, the last topic, as far as potential changes, really isn't a potential change, just a clarification. I was at a Justice User Policy Board meeting with Commissioner Eggers earlier this week, and the topic related to the decision package request that they brought forward for enhancements to the Justice CCMS system was brought up. And, during that meeting, I explained that the reason that that was not recommended for funding in FY '20 was not an expression of not supporting the enhancements, it was simply a cash flow question. And, the fact that they did not need cash because of the multi-year nature of many of these enhancements already underway, they have enough cash on hand to be able to support those enhancements that they're wanting to get started on. So, what I want to clarify with you is that there is $222,000 in enhancements that is being recommended by the Justice User Policy Board. There is not a recommendation from staff to say that we should not enable them and not support them in moving forward with those enhancements, but the funding that would come with that would be allocated and appropriated in the budget when that funding is actually needed. So, when the fiscal year comes out that they actually need that cash, that's when we would actually recommend appropriating that cash. Until that point, appropriating more cash and having it sit in reserves and not be available for other purposes and other priorities was not something we're recommending. So, that was really a clarification I wanted to make for you all, so that you didn't have a misconception and to be consistent with the discussion that we had at the Justice Policy Board meeting.
Yeah, just to comment on that.
And, the Justice CCMS enhancements, what price tag is that?
There are seven enhancements that they've identified as the highest priorities for moving forward, new ones, and those are $222,000 in total.
222?
Correct, 222.
Okay.
And, that's something that would be a request that would actually be appropriated over multiple years, depending on what the schedule is that the implementation firm, Tyler, is able to provide to us. It may be FY '20, FY '21, FY '22, you know, some combination of those before those enhancements would actually get done.
Yeah, I think they were concerned about Tyler not understanding exactly what that change meant, and so, they wanted to get back to them. And, and also that if, if the project was scheduled for over a three-year period but actually got accelerated into the current year and we didn't have the money, then what? And, I think the idea was, is that, I think, we kind of tried to reassure them that, you know, the commission is behind the efforts, so that, that, that would be, you know, dealt with at that time confidently, that, you know, that shortfall, in a sense, would then be dealt with. But, the anticipated would be, like, say, three years running, and if something happened to squeeze in early, that we would come up with that difference. Like he said, it's more from a cash flow perspective, so.
So, and then I also wanted to just see if there was any additional feedback regarding the proposed budget that you have today that would influence what the maximum millage rates we would be certifying.
I have a question. And, maybe you said it, and I didn't hear you. Where are you proposing the funding from the Cross Bay Ferry coming from?
That'd be from the reserves in the Transportation Trust Fund, which is the same funding source we used the prior two iterations of that ferry.
So, no thought to, to looking at our, the TDC funds for that, for that money?
The, we are looking at the TDC funds. There are a couple of issues that we have in terms of that being a potential funding source, one of them being that it doesn't appear that that would be eligible per our tourist development plan as it exists today. So, if you look at the provisions of the plan, there's not a place that naturally fits in. The other issue potentially is that when we look at the data, and we're still analyzing the data, the data doesn't appear to support that being a tourist venture. While it's something that appears to be used based on the survey data that we've seen so far by people as a recreation source, or recre, form of recreation, as opposed to a transportation alternative, there's definitely a combination of both. It looks like the vast majority of the users are local residents and not tourists.
I hadn't heard, I had heard the op, that there was a lot of tourism involved in it, so I'll be interested to see that information. It seems to be a, a natural fit there, but certainly not a transportation alternative at this point.
It, it's something that we've, we're continuing to look at based on the data that we have available, and we're still working with the city and HMS to be able to get more of the data than we have right now to be able to better understand the answer to that question specifically.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
Madam Chair, well, I, I would just like to, not that I disagree with you, Bill, because I don't like to do that, but I do think that we're being remiss if we don't, as Commissioner Eggers suggested, look more closely at the TDC funds for this issue, because that, when we had our joint meeting with that board, they did agree at the end, I think I read the tea leaves correctly, that if there was a project that was, could, that there could be a synergistic tie to tourism and moving our tourism around and our folks and keeping them off the highways, and that certainly is an alternative to going across the Howard Franklin Bridge, for example, if you're going to one of the athletic venues. And, I think that it certainly bears exploring a little deeper to see if there is a possibility there.
And, I would agree with you. It does, it should be explored more, and we are doing that.
Thank you, because as it gains traction and as more people learn about it, I mean, every year they've done it, the ridership has gone up exponentially, and so, I think it's, you know, just makes sense that we use our waterways to move some of the 15 million people that come into this county every year across the bridge. Just had to say that again. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Justice and Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, in that same vein, I mean, we've been talking about this for three years, about looking at the TDC money for similar, how we wrap the shuttles at the airport, and if half the users of the ferry are from Hillsborough County, aren't they're day trippers, they're day tourists? I don't know. It, it seems to make sense. We had actually talked about wrapping the ferry. We had talked about putting videos inside the ferry that highlighted Pinellas events and Pinellas locales, museums, et cetera. So, to me, that makes a lot more sense as a funding source. And, now, when we were at 350, there was one thing, but now we're down to 149, certainly seems like a reasonable amount to come from that. And, so, that's just my two cents on that. We've been, thought we've been looking at it for a while. And then I have another question on a different topic when you're, we come back.
Okay. Commissioner Welch?
Mine's on a different topic as well.
So, can we get a, where we were at last year with the different funding and where we're at in the proposed budget for our Meals for Seniors programs? I know we, we had some in the base budget, we had some that we added in the decision package, we did the pilot program with the AAA. If I could just, I don't know if you have that today, or if I could just get sometime soon, where we are currently in the proposed budget?
Was that not going to be part of the social service budget that we allocated that was almost going to continue for a while and then almost be bid out again?
Social action.
Well, I think there was, there was funds in different pots. That's why I want to get clarity before I-
There was.
Yeah, there's some other funds. That's the social action funding, and I believe it was 96,000 off the top of my head. So, that'll be rolled into that new process. But, all of the other funding remains the same, and we expect to continue our pilot with, in Marie and her folks. So, I can get you a breakdown of all of that.
Okay. That'd be helpful.
Yeah.
Because I thought we had, we're at 296 in the base, and then we did the 100-
And we kept adding, yeah.
Right. I just, so, if you can give me some clarity on that, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
It's all in what was previously given, but we'll pull it out to make it easy.
Thank you.
It's all pretty laid out.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And, just to be clear, the funding level for FY '20 that's being proposed is the same funding level that has been supported in the FY '19 budget.
Okay. Commissioner Welch?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do agree with looking at TDC funding for this. I think it's a good fit. Great news on the Tampa Bay incubator funding that was awarded a couple days ago. We received the news. And, so, we had a $4.5 million high-end commitment, worst-case commitment, I guess you could say, for the county. Do you anticipate any expenditures in FY '20? And, if so, where would they come from in the budget?
We haven't identified specific expenditures for FY '20 to date. We're going to be looking at that with economic development now that that award has been, you know, made by the EDA. And, as far as a funding source, we have multiple funding sources that we can consider, general funds, the penny for Pinellas, both our own piece, and then also potentially the, or the county-wide investment in economic development capital projects. Those are all sources that we control, that we have- Those are all sources that we control, that we have available to us. We have not identified yet which one and what combination would be the ones we would utilize.
Do we have a date when that expenditure is probably going to happen?
I do not have that date as of yet.
Okay. Can we get that, Barry?
We can.
Okay.
Yeah, we also talked about making that part of our legislative package.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
And if we could actually get a full presentation on what that facility will be and what it will actually do, and, because I don't know that we've ever actually had that.
Okay, anyone else?
Yes, Commissioner.
Yes, so this is on a different subject, but related to the budget, is this the appropriate time to ask my question, Commissioner Seal? Yeah? Okay. Just didn't want to interrupt you while you're talking.
He's following up on the comment, we're good.
So I wanted to talk about our office budgets a bit, if we could, and the reason I'm bringing it up is because several of us here are very involved with the Florida Association of Counties, and, you know, they have their policy conference up in the Panhandle coming up here shortly, which just because of everything else going on with us and with PSTA and TBARDA, et cetera, et cetera, I've made a decision not to go to. But there is a policy issue that I want to move forward again this year at FAC with regard to sea level rise and climate change, and so the legislative conference is going to be down in Miami. The reason I'm bringing that up is because I have Doyle doing some research to find out what the cost is going to entail, because right behind, in the same month as the FAC Legislative Conference is the NACO Conference, also down in Miami, that I also am planning on attending. And I'll be sending you all an email here shortly just to give you an overview of what's coming up that can potentially affect the travel budget. And I wanted to make sure, per the advice from FAC, that I have this discussion with all of you, because you may remember some time ago, I came to you and asked your approval if I were to decide to run for president of FAC. And at the time, I hadn't made any decision about continuing in public service, and I finally decided I wouldn't have enough time to get there, well, to get there, but now I am planning on seeking reelection. And so I would like to continue my involvement with FAC, I find it very meaningful and valuable for the work that we do here. And because we were so successful taking the climate compact that I worked so hard on last year to fruition with getting all the regional governments on board, you know, I also moved that through FAC, and it became their, one of their top three priorities for our state legislative plan last year to provide resiliency for the state of Florida. And now we have another request that we're going to be moving forward at FAC and at NACO. I mean, if we were so successful here, it seems only makes sense to try to move that through the national organization, and I'd like to at least try, since it's becoming such a major issue in our world with especially the melting ice in the Arctic. So that's, that adds to our travel budget, number one. And number two, our trip to DC that we make for PSTA is a trip to DC, which I've gone to for the last four or five years, but right behind that is APTA, and that I've also attended on behalf of APTA and now TBARDA, and that is in New York City. So those two things, the three things there, I venture to say will cause a little hiccup in the travel portion of our budget, and I'm very sensitive to the fact that there are seven of us, and it could potentially impact the overall part of the travel budget, and I just wanted to make everybody aware. Commissioner Jordan?
Couple of things, I don't understand why we would be paying for you to go to an APTA conference or to lobby on behalf of PSTA.
We're not, but PSTA, I have always worked really hard whenever I've gone with PSTA. Before that, I had gone to DC at AMP, for AMP Skills, to their annual conference, and those different groups picked up the cost. As it relates to FAC and NACO, though-
I understand that.
Yeah, well, I'm just giving you the total outline of-
But that won't impact our travel budget, APTA and-
Well, no, but there are, I'm just saying, I think it would be wise to discuss it with all of you, and if you don't care and you don't want to know, I won't talk about it again.
Well, it's not related to the budget. So I guess my question is if we all have the same travel budget and half of us use almost nothing of it, is it a problem if one of us goes over budget? What happens to us? I guess I've never asked, what happens if we go over our budget?
Bill has the historic-
Somebody come and school us, or what?
Historic perspective on this, but I will also say that this was raised since Commissioner Peters is not here. She asked that same question because she was put on a NACO task force or something earlier this year, and you have a limited travel amount. But I think you all rolled together, so as a total appropriation, as long as, you know, as a group, you don't go over, but it's very hard to, you know, to know that when some of you may have different travel plans and others don't, how do you, that's the real question, I think. It's never been a problem, but the potential's there that it could be.
Well, maybe we need to increase it a little bit, but I know there's a lot of unspent funds between the seven of us.
We take from the total office budget that we haven't ever spent at all, so it gets transferred within our budget, like, you know, the copier expenses and other expenses, so we've been able to absorb it so far. But if you, I think to that end, if, if you can get a, if Doyle has an idea of how much it's going to cost and we can put our arms around it, we'll try to adjust the budget accordingly.
Well, that's why I'm bringing it up, because he's working on getting those numbers and-
Do we have the same, because when we put in those, the form every year, I don't know, I mean, the numbers are a little different from office to office, so I didn't know that we did have the same amount for travel for each person. You know, I usually put in a-
We have the same amount allocated per person, I'm going to say it's 2,500?
For travel, or, or-
I don't think it is the same, Commissioner Seal.
You have a total office budget, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong here, you have a total office budget of about $8,700. And, but the, again, some of the differences may be differences in salaries from, you know, from some of the staff members, but I-
I know what he's talking about, because every year-
We get a form, and it's got postage, and it's got travel, education, those kind of things, and if it's the same, then I don't know why I've actually taken any time to think about what those were, amounts were before.
Thank you.
Because I would up them and down them a little bit based on, I'd look at the previous year, what we spent, and I'd try and reflect that in the current year, and I'd look at the FAC conferences, and, and I'm not going to that one in the Panhandle, the timing of it is ridiculous, but during Budget Week. But, so anyway, that's how I've done it, but if it's all the same for everyone, then
Yeah, why are we bothering to fill out that form?
We can certainly, we can ask Bill to work with each of your offices and identify that prior to the finalization of the budget, to see if there's even an issue based on the varying travel needs.
There hasn't been, no.
So-
Yeah, I, thank you for bringing it up, because I think it's, I think it's important that we communicate with each other. I think a lot of our other boards that we sit on will be reimbursed through that board, so I think part of what you were talking about is obviously going to be reimbursed through PSTA, and if I did some traveling on behalf of Tampa Bay Water, I would assume that they would do that as well. So I think we just have to talk about our involvement with Florida Association of Counties and the National Association of Counties, and anybody else that we think are important, so that we, you asked for permission before, then I think the board said, yeah, that's a good use of additional funds. And I think that's something that we should scrutinize. I mean, I don't think we should just run that budget up and expect Charlie not going, I'm going to use part of your budget, because I have, you know, I think we need to have that conversation that's above and beyond the norm. So, I mean, I don't, it's not a big deal, we just have a conversation one time about it and see if we think it's important that people go to NACO. And if it is, then that's what we agree to fund, or additional things that you're talking about, so.
I think we're having it right now.
Yeah. Well, yeah.
Well, I do think it's important to have, I mean, I do think it's important for us to be involved, and if we have two people that are involved at national level in different organizations, then maybe it does, they're taking a look at, but then again.
So I have one more thing that I want to make you aware of, because I think it could, has the potential to put Pinellas County on the map. And I apologize, Barry, that I'm bringing these things up without having the opportunity to talk to you about them, I just haven't seen you yet, but we have, I told you the story, I think I did, in our last meeting about the things I learned being at TBARDA with that drone technology that can serve as an air taxi, and the, the company that perfected that technology is in Germany, and their folks are coming here shortly, and we're going to be meeting with them. And then, just so happens that the general consular for Germany, her headquarters are in Tampa, and she heard about it from, I don't know where, but in any case, she did, and she's been communicating with Doyle, because the German ambassador is coming here in the next few weeks, actually in September, in September. I think you're tuned into this, are you not, Jill? Because I know he's been chatting with you as well, or whatever, and I just think that's an unbelievable opportunity to highlight some of the things the county is doing on sea level rise and climate change and taking advantage of what the new technologies are that are being developed in other parts of the world. And to that end, they want to tour around some of our facilities and see what we have done as it relates to mitigating the carbon footprint here in our county. And so hopefully Jill and Doyle and Hank are going to work on that a little bit, because I really don't know if we have any facilities that we can highlight. But I know that Ron Petrini out at Great Bay Distributors has turned his whole building into a platform for how to use solar energy and reduce the carbon footprint exponentially. If none of you toured that building, you really should, it's spectacular. Anyone else? So, that's the end of my exciting news for today.
So, so do we, so, so do we need to maybe get with each of the commissioners and, like you said, Barry, and-
I'll ask staff to get with each of the commissioners, outline, you know, any non, or, you know, or outline any travel, additional things within the, your different office budgets, and then we can look at the overall budget and see if we're okay, or whether we need to make adjustments.
Yeah, I think we need to understand the process first, because as Commissioner Justice says, we all, every year I estimate which conferences I'm going to, give that to Darlina. I thought that it was different for each county commission, district office in the budget, so let's understand the process first and then go from there.
Yeah, and I would, there's small variations in how much flexible spending that you all have in your budgets each year, and when I say flexible, it would be for things like travel, for example. Office supplies are not considered to be flexible, because there's one budget for everybody, and it just gets spread evenly among everybody. The travel is very individualized, as an example. So there are specific amounts that you have that's made available to you, and we do ask you to break up, how much do you think you're going to spend for travel, for conferences, for, you know, if you're, you know, going to be, you know, getting a laptop, for example, if you need some accessories for your PC, all those different pieces, we do ask you to break that down. But from a budgetary control perspective, and this is tracking back to the conversation we had last week at the board meeting when we talked about the level of budgetary control, the level of budgetary control is such that, first of all, within your individual district budgets, you have flexibility to mix and match all of those dollars. So if one of you ends up having your assistant leave and it's, the position's vacant for a certain period of time, those funds are lapsed, those funds are available for any use. In addition to having that flexibility within your individual district budget, we've set the level of budgetary control such that all of you combined are what we're looking at, in terms of are we going to need a budget amendment? So the only time we need to amend the budget is if you all collectively, all seven districts in total, go over the total budget for all seven districts. And we do that purposefully, because that gives you the flexibility and us the flexibility collectively to not go through an administrative process of moving dollars around that are going to be very small in nature relative to the total budget, and we know that from year to year, there may be changes in, you know, who's going to be traveling more. The chair typically is going to have more travel, more activity than board members that are not in the chair seat, and that changes each year. So having large variations from year to year is somewhat expected, and we do ask for what the estimates are, but ultimately, at the end of the day, unless you collectively exceed your total budget, all seven of you combined, putting it all together in total, then there's no budget amendment that's necessary. We do provide reports on a regular basis, you do have, your assistants have reports available to you. A couple of years ago, we actually had a training to help all of you, both yourselves and your assistants, be able to better understand how does the budget work, what's the budget process, what are the tools that you have available to be able to monitor the budget. We can certainly revisit that, because it's been a couple of years, and depending on how much, you know, you or your assistants have used it, or whether your assistants or, in Commissioner Peters' case, whether you were even here, that may or may not be something that you have total recall and, you know, the ability to really take advantage of. But, you know, the Budget Office, we're available, Cecilia McCorkle on our team is the one who's assigned to be able to provide support to you all, and she'd be more than happy to sit down with any one of you and your assistants and/or, you know, put together a training collectively where we can talk about what are the tools that are available and what is the process, that everybody has the same understanding, and we can kind of reset, you know, where we were a couple of years ago, because again, it's been a couple of years, and it's natural that with all the priorities that you have, this wasn't exactly the first one.
Yeah, and it'd be, it'd be nice to know that if towards the end of the year, if somebody's budget is in use, but the, there's other monies available, and Charlie's not going to spend his money, I keep picking on Charlie, that I can say, hey, Charlie's got a little extra money in his budget, how do we go about, and if he's okay releasing, so how do we go about that? I mean, that's just a mechanical process.
Sure.
No big deal, but just needs to be smoothed out or whatever, and I don't know how they would do that, but.
So we can, we'll do a follow-up with each, with each office and bring that back to you as part of the final budget.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes. Anything else? No, I said, thank you. All right, thanks.
Any additional feedback as far as the proposed budget? Okay, so moving on to the millage rates themselves, just a reminder that as far as the millage rates that we're proposing, we're not proposing any changes to the millage rates for the countywide or MST rates. The rates that you see on the screen are those countywide MST rates, the general funds, EMS, Health Department, and MSTU, unincorporated. The independent districts as well, there are no changes proposed to those. And then I did mention last week that the fire districts, we do have seven fire districts that we're recommending a reduction in the millage rate to something that's generally equivalent to the rollback rate. We've done that again, just as a reminder, and the seven districts are listed on your screen. The reason that we're doing that is because we have excess reserves available, and when we look at the recurring expenditures and the future capital needs and forecast that out over multiple years, what it's telling us is that we have excess reserves available, and as a result of that, we can reduce the millage rate and still meet the needs of those districts. So we're proposing those changes. The changes that we're proposing are very conservative at this point, and we are meeting with those service providers to be able to examine what the financial forecast looks like, and we may be coming back for some of these districts with the recommendation for their tentative budget to actually reduce the millage rate even further. But to be conservative and make sure that we aren't missing something in our analysis, we want to meet with those providers and make sure that the maximum millage rate is at a level that we're comfortable will not put us in hot water regardless of what response and what dialogue we have with those providers.
Madam Chair? So Bill, whenever we talk about the fire districts, it makes my antenna go up, because I remember so clearly all the major kerfluffles that used to go on between the county commissioners and our fire districts, and I'm just curious, because I'm trying to remember the timeframe, aren't we at the end of that five-year contract that we put in place five years ago? No, where are we in that?
Well, I, I think there, there are two things that I want to provide clarity to. The discussions that we've had in the contract that you're referring to is actually the EMS portion and the EMS funding.
Oh. Oh.
So when we're providing funding to the fire district or the fire providers, that's as first responders, and that comes from the EMS fund. And we have on a continual basis continued to work with them in order to determine what is the right funding level for them, using the data-driven focus groups that we have with them. And we're all continuing to be on the same page in determining where's additional funding necessary and appropriate and justified by the data and being able to provide additional funding to specific fire providers as first responders based on those needs that have been expressed through the data.
So on the fire side, though, are we good with our contract? It's not time for that to start.
No, the fire, the, each of the fire districts, the independent or the, you know, independent unincorporated, so this is basically the unincorporated fire district. So this is how the unincorporated residents receive fire services. So we actually will bid out on a, you know, periodic basis, who is actually providing that fire service to those unincorporated residents. And when we bid that out, that's when we establish the contract.
And so the contract that takes care of the Tierra Verde area, I believe that's with Lealman, that's all still good?
As of now, yes. Yeah, there are no, there are no issues that I'm aware of as of today regarding any of these 12 districts.
Okay, thank you.
So with that, I want to be able to just affirm with you that the rates that we've proposed in the proposed budget are the maximum millage rates that we would certify. As you know, at Budget Information Sessions, we don't have formal votes. But if I could just get a consensus that that is the direction that we want to go, that there is support for using the proposed budget millage rates for the maximum millage rates, we'll certify those with the property appraiser. And then, as I said, we'll come forward before the tentative budget with any changes that we might propose to potentially lower some of those fire district rates.
Good question. Not necessarily with that, just trying to, maybe you can help me with it, maybe not today, but maybe you can get back to me. In, in an effort to keep, you know, government spending somewhat under control like we do, there is a, this millage increase, we have had a millage increase at the county level in our add-on in some time, but we continue to use the increase in property values. Is there a, a way to know how much we're actually increasing our expenditures from year to year? Does it relate to millage rate and rollback rate and how they compare? Just so we can try to keep, I mean, in other words, we're getting six or seven percent increase in values. In my mind, I'm thinking we should be spending up to that four or five percent and not overspending. Is there a way to know how much we're actually increasing our spending from year to year through the, through the use of the rollback or not?
Yeah, certainly. The, the budget document expresses that in multiple ways, and depending on what aspect of the budget you want to look at, there's analysis in there that helps to provide insight to exactly that kind of information. We've tracked back to the proposed budget presentation. There were a couple of slides in there that talked about the BCC, constitutional officers, and then the independent agencies, and what the change in the budget was for each of those. If you remember, when we talked about the forecast, one of the things that we talked about was the fact that it's unsustainable for us to continue to grow our expenditures with enhanced services on a continual basis as we have been over the past several years. So those are all the types of analysis that we do on a regular basis. In terms of keeping the millage rate the same despite the fact that we have rising property values, what that enables us to do is two things. One is that enables us to be able to keep our expenditures essentially flat in the light of, in the face of inflation. So inflation's going to increase those expenditures. The service levels remain the same as a result of the fact that we have funding to help support that inflation. In addition to that, each of you have considered decision packages every year, and those decision packages are largely what makes up the gap. And if you take the inflationary increase and then how much is left after that because of property tax values increasing, that's, that delta is usually what's being used for the decision packages.
And in this particular year, we're actually putting some in reserve.
We are, yes.
And, and with the idea of perhaps using some of them
Correct.
during the coming year. Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
Commissioner Walsh.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bill, again, great job on the budget. Two questions, one on the millage rates for the fire districts. As I recall, on occasion, we have to raise that if there's some capital project for the fire department. So what's your timing window when you look at it and say they don't need, or we can actually reduce their millage? How far have we looked out for future capital projects?
We've looked out 10 years
10?
for each of the districts.
Okay. And the second question is, I really miss being able to pull up my budget and search it via PDF. So what's the status of the, the compliance issue?
So there are two things I would reference as far as that goes, and I'm glad you brought that up, I was going to mention that a little bit later. But as far as actually having it on our public website, the Citizen Budget website, we're continuing to work with OTI to determine what actions are necessary in order to convert each of the pages in the document into something that's ADA accessible. We are at a place where I can't say definitively how much work will be able to be done before we get to the tentative budget. The proposed budget is not required by statute to be posted on the website, the tentative budget is. So our focus is really on what do we need to do to have the tentative budget posted on the website? And then to the extent that we can apply that to the proposed budget and there's time to be able to do that, that's what our intent is. The other thing I would mention is that the documents, the soft copy documents, the electronic documents that represent the budget document that normally would be posted, those are posted internally. So they are available for all of you on the internal website, and I'd be happy to share that link with you. But also, we are happy to be able to send that out by email or other form
That's good.
to any citizen that requests it. And we have had, one of our media members had actually asked for that after the meeting last week, and we were able to provide the entire document that way.
If you would send us that link, I think that'd be very helpful. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right.
So as far as the maximum millage rates, is everyone, is there any discomfort, any objections to using the proposed budget millage rates?
I was going to just ask you to put that chart up. I handed out to everybody the property tax rates and revenue sheet for fiscal '19 and fiscal '20. And so this, for the public, this is what we are going to vote on and get for certification to the property appraiser by tomorrow. Please look at fiscal year '20, the tax rate millage down there. Jewel, do we need to go each category and approve it, or can we approve this as shown?
No, you can approve it as shown. And you're really, as Bill's been saying, you're really just certifying the maximum millage rate at this point to the property appraiser. When we get to the budget hearings, even then, you may recall over the last few years, we have done a single vote, and there are voting thresholds that need to be met.
I know.
But it's different than the old days when we used to go by each individual.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we were good to go. I do want to note that, as stated already in the presentation, Bel Air Bluffs, Clearwater, Dunedin, Gandy, Largo, Safety Harbor, and South Pasadena Fire Protection Districts are all proposing a decrease. So, just for the record. So I would entertain a motion to approve the property tax rate for fiscal '20 as shown for the trim notices.
I move approval to approve the property tax, tax rate and revenue as shown on the screen for 2020.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Long and second by Commissioner Gerard.
So we can vote today on this, on this?
You can. The reason why you all don't vote at workshops is just your policy, I would say. There is no impediment to you taking a vote today. The meeting's properly noticed, you're here, the budget is something that's been advertised. It's really just a habit that you all have developed over the years not to take votes at workshop. No legal reason why you can't.
And this, Madam Chair, this needs to be done today. The vote needs to happen today.
Well, we need guidance on the vote. You can have a vote, but he needs to be able to publish or certify tomorrow.
And I prefer a vote for the record, so. All right, we're ready to vote. If I could bring up the...
Did you vote?
Oh, I don't have my little thing didn't come up. Yes, I'm a yes.
Verbally?
Yes, I'm a yes.
Okay. All right, it's a unanimous vote. Thank you all very much. And then the next slide shows the budget timeline.
Yeah, so just as a reminder regarding the next steps in the budget process, you know, today we just approved the maximum millage rates. We'll certify those with the property appraiser tomorrow. Trim notice will be mailed out on the 20th or thereabouts. On September 10th, we'll be posting the tentative budget to the county website per state statute, and that's in advance of our first public hearing on September 12th, at which time you'll be adopting the tentative millage rates and budgets for FY '20. On September 24th, you'll adopt the final millage rates and budgets for FY '20. October 1st is the beginning of the fiscal year. And then by October 23rd or earlier, we're required by state statute to post the adopted FY '20 budget.
Okay. Before we leave the budget and start on the agenda briefing, it was mentioned that for the cross, the ferry, cross bay ferry, that we look at using tourist development dollars. I just want to remind you all that those dollars can only be used for capital. And I believe the proposed budget from Mayor Christman is for operations and maintenance.
We couldn't use it for marketing? I mean...
We could use it for marketing, but, and that would not require actually a change in the tourist development plan. Because remember, if we were going to look at this, then we would have to change the tourist development plan, which had, and then the TDC would also have to approve it. So, well, I'll ask Mayor Christman, since he's coming to our meeting on Tuesday, for a few things, which is if any of this is to be used for capital, what's being used for marketing, and also a zip code analysis. Because I also pulled up a opinion by the Attorney General, and you had, to do a private financial contract, which this kind of is, it's a private ferry service, that you have to show that it has a tourism purpose. And we don't know, I looked at Mayor Christman's presentation, and I do not know, it does not show zip code analysis of out-of-state or out-of-the-area tourists.
When I saw it, when we were talking about it, my thought was that in exchange for commitment of X dollars, we would get X marketing benefit in return, which would be the wrapping of it, the video presentation and the, you know, and the collateral material that would be there for the visitors of the ferry. That's, that was, in my head, similar to the airport shuttles and the buses that we wrap that, which I think we've done some locally, as a marketing expense, not a capital expense.
Right.
But that's, in my head, that's what I was thinking.
Which I think is a great idea. So what I will do is I'll call Mayor Christman this afternoon and ask him if he can provide us further breakdown and whether we would be able to do that on the ferry.
And so, Madam Chair, but our contract, when he's coming here making this presentation, then our contract is with him and the city of St. Petersburg. It's not with the private vendor, right?
True, but it's then contractually going to a private company. So, I mean, you just quickly was revering the Attorney General's opinion, so making sure that we were all knowledgeable about it. I can provide you a copy of that. I already sent an email to Cindy to print it out for me, so. Okay.
And Commissioners, I would offer, I've already requested the zip code analysis and have received additional detail on the survey that had been done beyond what was in the presentation materials, so.
So he hasn't done one?
You haven't received the zip code analysis.
I have not yet received the zip code analysis. The city was following up on that again today. They had requested it earlier this week as a result of the request. So I'd be happy to share that once we do receive that, along with the survey results that we have that's more detailed than was originally provided.
As usual, you're ahead of the game. Thank you, Bill. Thanks to everybody on the budget discussion, and now we'll move on to the agenda briefing.
The agenda brief, you have three presentations. Mayor Christman. You have a couple of public hearings. You have, the first public hearing is a map amendment for a half acre, and this is with the city of Clearwater. His property is a part of voluntary annexation. The second map amendment is with the city of St. Petersburg. This is a public, semi-public to residential, low, medium. This was also unanimously recommended by the Ford Pinellas Planner and Judiciary Council. The next one is with the city of Tarpon Springs. And this is for a little over two acres, amendment from retail services to industrial. Questions? Next, we come to number, item seven is a petition to vacate a 15-foot drainage and utility easement. Under eight, nine, 10 are reports. Item number 11 is to declare surplus and authorize the sale of donation miscellaneous county-owned equipment.
Could I address that? On the surplus equipment, I think I've questioned this before, but we added Swanee County many years ago, but I don't believe they've accessed any of our surplus equipment. And I think if that's the case, that we should ask them and then delete that because it's just time on our staff's part if they're not going to actually trigger that. And I mean, I think it's been in place for maybe 10 years. The other thing, not to really get into it today, but I had a request several months ago for, you know, could someone be, could we donate a county vehicle? And we have a policy right now that does not allow us to donate vehicles. And the fear of it is because we may be giving them an asset that breaks down tomorrow. But it's something, I'll get you the policy and let you all take a look at it. I think it's something that we could consider, you know, it would be at their risk. I mean, we get cents on the dollars for our vehicles when we sell them. So I know we have in the past, for whatever it's worth, I think we surplus some of our very heavy vehicle equipment and donated them. I think we did a fire vehicle, too, some time ago. So I just, there are some not-for-profits that could really utilize some of these vehicles. And again, it's cents on the dollars. And we'd have to develop a very sound contract if we were going to donate that, so.
I've got that on our one-on-ones. I was going to follow up on that. When I saw this on the agenda, I said, oh.
Commissioner Seal's going to bring it up.
She's going to ring it up. We haven't, we haven't wrapped around on that.
No, I know.
But it is a policy issue, it's something we need to discuss.
Yeah. I see some heads nodding, so would you like to see a copy of that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Number 12 is a risk management report. Item 13 is ranking of firms in agreement with PLC Construction for the Dunn Water Recreation Facility improvements. Item 14 is issuing your countywide planning authorities setting a public hearing date to consider proposed amendments to the countywide strategies and rules. These are all related to the Ford Pinellas changes. Onto the regular agenda. Item 15 is approving a qualified target industry tax refund program. Probably saw that article in the newspaper. Item number 16 is ratification of a county administrator's approval of a warrant of a bid for Port of Pitt, which doesn't sound like a good emergency food services
It doesn't sound like a fake service.
... but in fact it is. So this, this is for our, for our emergency food services during any type of need or emergency situation. Item 17 is the second renewal, the second option of renewed amendment to an agreement with Catholic Charities for Pinellas Hope Emergency Shelter. Item 18 is a funding agreement with the Pinellas County Homeless Leadership Board for the diversion program in bridge housing. The amounts are listed.
And doesn't necessarily have to be answered today, but I believe the family bridge housing started later than anticipated, so I'm hoping that there's money that can be rolled over to actually supplement the budget, so.
Well, Laura's just here if she wants to be, if you can address it or we can get back. We can follow up.
Yeah, you don't have to. ended up getting the program in place halfway through the year, so they're, is what I've heard. Charlie, do you know anything?
I do not.
All right, we'll try to get some answers on that.
Item 19 is a resolution adopting a health and all policies approach to our county decision policy development implementation. This is through our planning department, and this would be used to, as part of our overall comprehensive plan and how we make decisions.
Question? Do we have, correct me, in my memory, we had a outside funding source for a staff person to help with this?
That's correct.
Is that in place? Do we have that?
Yes.
Okay.
We do.
I think they're in the planning department.
They are.
Yeah.
Okay. Was it a new, new hire, or was it?
I can't answer that one.
Yes, I actually ended up meeting with her, and I think she came over from East Florida.
Okay.
But yeah, they were good stuff, but maybe it would be good to have her come on Tuesday and give us an overview of what's going on.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Sounds good, we'll do that. Item 20 is a grant agreement with Florida Department of Environmental Protection for the Long Key Upland Beach Growing Record Replacement Project. This is for, I believe it's for, you know, for permanent. Item 21 is a resolution amending the allowable industrial pretreatment program local limits, and this is to comply with EPA requirements. We'll have county administrators report, and then county attorney.
Hi, I'm not anticipating anything.
And then two appointments to the Greater Seminole Recreation District under item 26.
Okay. Great. Well, I wanted to congratulate Mike Mydell and Economic Development on getting the federal grant for the new innovation center, 7.5 million, and so I assume we'll be needing to look at our budget to augment that, so, not for this meeting coming up, but for meetings nearer in the future, let's have a discussion about that.
Dan, we'll get you a breakdown for the seniors, for the meals, and then we will look at a presentation on the incubator
Incubator and funding options.
Which will include funding options.
Okay, very good. Is there anything else from anyone else, other than I'd like to recognize Dave Eggers? And we had a stalwart citizen pass away, unfortunately, and...
Yeah, so if you don't mind, Gladys Douglas, really a philanthropist, a businessperson, just a wonderful person who lived, really involved in Clearwater and Dunedin over the years, passed away on the 24th, and so if you don't mind, just give maybe a half a minute or minute of silence, and then I'll just say a couple of words. Thank you.
Commissioner?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just, you know, I think the, we have so many wonderful folks in our, our communities throughout the county that, that invest their time and energy, dollars, emotions, et cetera, that, that, that are with us for a short period of time, or if we're lucky, a little longer period of time. And Gladys has been so, so active in, in the communities of Clearwater and Dunedin, and very involved in Art Center, the churches, Habitat for Humanity, Ruth Eckert Hall, and it goes on and on, and she has a list of awards that have been given to her for all of the many things that she's done, very involved with the Junior, Junior Women's Club as well. So there's just so many parts of the city that she's touched, and I know that there are, for instance, the Dunedin Chamber of Commerce building was, was a part of her, you know, thought process and involvement, and, and so she's touched many parts of Dunedin, and I just think it was a sad day in Dunedin when we lost her, but again, I think they're having a funeral service, I mean, at the, at the cemetery tomorrow at 1:00, and they're going to have a reception at the Fine Arts Center after that, all tomorrow afternoon, so I appreciate the time and our condolences to Bob Hackworth, her husband, and his family and her family, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Eggers, and she was quite a, quite a woman
Yeah.
And did
Amazing.
Great things for this community, so, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for the good of the order? Well, this was a quick meeting, we are adjourned.